I now call this special meeting the City Council Board. I would ask everyone to please silence their cellphones and other devices. The city clerk, please take your role.
House of Representatives.
President.
House of Representatives.
Here.
House of Representatives.
Here.
House of Representatives.
President.
House of Representatives.
Here.
House of Representatives.
Here.
House of Representatives.
President.
House of Representatives.
President. President. For the city clerk, please take your call.
In accordance with Section 3.07 of the Home Charter and Section 2.04.07 of the Southern City Code, I hereby call this special meeting the Council to be held on Tuesday, August 15, 2015, at 7:00 AM in council chambers, requesting the mayor's parents to answer questions to the members of the City Council of citizens concerning the Rhode Island State Police Assessment Report of the Friends and the Friends Department. I hear my request to say, however, to notify all council members of the called special meeting, executed friends from Rhode Island on the sixth day of August 2015, Johnny Laney Jr., Council President.
For all members of the council notified and called promptly at this time of the closing.
Yes.
At this time, I would ask everyone to stand. He was there among the size of arms, first officer, leader, and captain, Green Ray, who died in Afghanistan during the attack fight of Taliban. He was a seventeen-year Army veteran who had also served in Iraq and received a Bronze Star with B-Divices for heroism in combat operations. He also received a materials service medal, Army Commendation Medal, things specifically throughout his family and loved ones. Thank you. The purpose of this meeting is limited to state police, to the state police assessment. We give the public and the council an opportunity to ask questions. Any subject or topics that are not properly reported cannot be addressed at this meeting. I'll open the meeting, the public hearing portion, to the public to make any statements or ask any questions of the mayor relating to the report only. Each individual has four minutes, and please give your name and address to the record. With the sign-up sheet, the first name on that sheet is Mike Sebby, Ninety-Five Massachusetts Street. The mayor will respond at the closing of the public speaking portion, and then I will open up the meeting for questions for the City Council.
Mike Sebby, Ninety-Five Massachusetts Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I'm a former council president, former councilman of the Cranston City Council. No.
It's on?
There's a button there.
I'm colorblind. There it is. You can hear me now. Ticket Gate, Watergate, these two scandals have much more in common than sharing the same suspects. It's obvious who is and continues to play the roles of Ehrlichman and Haldeman in Cranston. And this scandal is unfolding, just like Watergate. President Nixon denied, 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 and Mayor Fung has denied, denied, denied. Mayor Fung wants the residents of Cranston to forgive him for his mistakes, but can any reasonable person characterize Mayor Fung's interference in meddling in the Antonucci fiasco and other serious police matters as a mistake? Section 501 of our City Charter entitled "Mayor expressly provides that the mayor shall actively supervise, direct, and control the activities of all administrative departments and agencies of the city." Our police department is one of these departments. Is it reasonable to accept that Mayor Fung made a mistake? He was first elected mayor in 2008 and has been in that seat for about six and a half years. Mayor Fung should not be allowed to hide behind the shield of on-the-job training. Failure to supervise the activities described in the Rhode Island State Police Report is not a rookie mistake. These are behind-the-scenes maneuvers designed to maintain autocratic control over our police department through secret KEG tactics, intimidation, and abuse. More specifically, you can't characterize Mayor Fung's actions in secretly orchestrating settlements with Captain Antonucci, undercutting Captain Barry and Lieutenant Moynihan of the State Police, who at the same time were actively prosecuting Antonucci for several violations of Cranston police policy. This is clearly not a mistake. It's the intentional act of a mayor, who is also a licensed lawyer, to spend public funds to settle the Antonucci lawsuit. In essence, it is kicking every resident of our city to the curb for its own benefits. As I said over one year ago, once again, I strongly urge the council to create an investigative committee and appoint a special prosecutor to follow the facts and the evidence wherever they may lead. Exist the corruption at the root of the core. Colonel White was, can continue to lead us on a path of professionalism and integrity in our police department. Cranston residents deserve this. Justice demands it. And there's a question I'd like to ask Mayor Fung. I've known Mayor Fung for many, many years, probably about forty years. I remember him as a little boy when he worked on Cranston Street in his Ireland's restaurant. I can't understand why the mayor would throw his political career away over this here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Carrera.
In a second. Mr. Council President, members of the council, my name is Stephen Carrera, five for Shirley Drive. I rise, which is a task within itself, regarding this latest fiasco on a hundred-and-eighty-two-page state police report outlining the meddling of the mayor in the police department. First, as a member of the just-passed Charter Review Commission, I was a member, and it gave me great insights as to what the charter was, what the charter does. It's not just any ordinary book of laws that's passed by a council in nine weeks. Every provision in this document is placed on a ballot and voted on in the affirment by every voter. Through the years, I've become to garner a great deal of respect for this document. I feel that the mayor is guilty of charter violations regarding 5.01. That provision is, again, chief executive authority within city government is hereby vested to the mayor, elected as provided in Chapter Two. The mayor shall actively supervise, direct, and control in accordance with the provisions of the charter. The ordinances of the city and the laws of the state are far applicable. The activities of all administrative departments and agencies of the city. The mayor shall be responsible for their efficient and economic operations, for the enforcement of the laws of the state and the ordinances of the city, and for the preservation of the peace held in safety of its inhabitants. Section 5.02, power of point, and removal. The mayor, with the advice and consent of the City Council, shall have power to appoint the heads of all departments, except for the Department of Records. The mayor shall appoint four members of the City Planet Commission, the Advisory Committee on Parks and Recreation, the Industrial Development Commission, the head... The head of such additional departments as may be created by ordinance, the employees of the mayor's own staff, and all officers and employees of the city for whom no other method of appointment is provided. The heads of all departments of police, fire, and personnel shall be members of the classified service and shall be appointed and removed, subject to the provisions of Chapter Fourteen, as shall all employees of the mayor's office, except one confidential secretary or assistant. All other heads of the department shall be appointed to serve at the pleasure of the mayor, subject only to the appointee's possession of the qualifications prescribed by the charter. Now, the reason that this document is somewhat important, matter of fact, is very important to me, is because while I was on the Charter Review Commission, the appointment for Chief Palumbo came up. And I knew that the charter is an apolitical document, and many people testified in favor of the mayor's selection for chief. Among other people that testified beside myself are current Speaker of the House Matt Yellen, Deputy Speaker Lima, the late, great Holly Romano, and even Father Hill, among others. We felt so strongly that this charter is so very important and so apolitical that the mayor should get his choice as the chief, that we needed to rise in favor of this appointment. Equally, equally, this also allows the mayor to remove that chief for insubordination, and it came along, and that insubordination was demonstrated. And that insubordination was demonstrated long before the state police were involved. I want to rise and feel that all of the taxpayers and all of the citizens of this great city have been harmed by these actions. All right? These charter violations, I feel, should be addressed and should be addressed completely and entirely. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
The next speaker will be Aaron Birvino.
Thank you, members of the City Council. There are so many microphones here, I can't play them out.
It's on now.
I'll try to do my best. First of all, I came to see you today because having lived in Cranston since 1962, having served in the City Council as council president, ten years in the general assembly, six years on the school committee, I thought the subject at hand, that I should come here because I'm privy in experience and time to have an idea of how our city government is supposed to perform. I participated there. So I came here tonight to point out that there are good things that have happened to this city over the years. Years ago, we didn't have provisions in our city charter. The city charter started, and the city charter was in addition to our rights under the state constitution, under the rights of the general laws, under the rights of city ordinances, and finally, our city adopted Home Rule in 1962. And I have been a student of knowing what the law is, and most times keeping up to it as much as I can. The way I recognized what our current situation is, first of all, we thank the council for having a hearing on this matter. Second of all, we have an opportunity to speak, and what I'd like to see happen in Cranston is that we put together all that's happened. We have a report that I haven't read, I haven't finished reading it, it's very lengthy, it's online. It appears that years ago, when we first passed our charter, we did not have to, basically, I said that we should have an investigation, but we had the city charter on the ballot that we had to enforce our city charter. In our charter, we have provisions for ordinances and laws, but the city charter has become our city constitution, and it's very, very clear that certain things have to take place. First of all, both the mayor and the council are authorized to investigate, okay? The City Council, way back in January twenty-seventh, two fourteen, they had a resolution going, and it was interested in investigating, and at some point, the mayor decided that he should ask the state police, and from that, we got this huge report. It would seem to me, this is more than a business matter, it's a matter of how the people in Cranston feel about their police department and their mayor and the conduct of everything. So I would say this, from this meeting, after hearing from the public, after taking the report that is submitted by the state police, there's a process that should be taken, that the City Council actually go through the process of investigation of this whole matter, using the Colonel Record and others, and have hearings, and get to the bottom of it, so when we move forward, we're moving and saying, we halted for a moment, put our heads together, and we acted accordingly, and we followed everything. There are a lot of people who already made up their minds on what they've read. They've read O'Donnell, many people trust the state police. So what I would say, we move forward, so later on, we won't regret that we took the proper steps and procedures. So I would think that's what the City Council has to do. After hearing the people, and the action should take place, and we should follow a very sound course. So we would cover all the points that have to be covered. And then, we will have time. There are things, a person being off a job for a lengthy, long period of time, eighteen months, whatever, we may need a better recording system. Who's out on, is getting paid? There are a lot of things, you guys and ladies, have to come up with, and that is, do your homework, follow the process, and come back and do the thing in a right way. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Sheridan.
Matt Sheridan, Mary Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island, council president and distinguished members. Thank you for your time. So I'm just going to kind of speak like Bill Reynolds with a few outtakes here. Best interests of the taxpayers, I personally don't think so. I feel that will cost the taxpayers millions for this mismanagement, a little bit more than the thousands that Councilman Botts has referred to on his tweets. Teachers, we need to see the world through their set of glasses. We need to see through the parents' set of glasses and the guardians' set of glasses. I think the mayors should see through the taxpayers' set of glasses, because we don't think so right now. I'll do better. Well, I think six years as mayor and five years on the council, how much more time? You stated that you've met with every union leader in the city? No. The union leader of the largest union in the city, the Cranston Teachers Alliance, Liz Larkin is waiting. When you became mayor, I wonder, when you drove to achievement first, was there a deal that was cut? Was the council consulted on this? Was the school committee consulted? More importantly, I don't think the taxpayers were...
Excuse me, Mr. Sheridan?
Yep, I'm going to get to my question.
One point.
What else don't we know? My specific question, at any point in the Rhode Island State Police Report, or specifically Colonel Winquist's statement, are there any misrepresentations or incorrect statements? Full faith in Colonel Winquist, and I will have his honor, character, and citizenship presented in the report. I spoke to him at a school committee meeting, the appointment of our new superintendent, and he referred to it as our city, Lord. What do the citizens think the mayor should do? Speak loudly, Cranstonians.
Our next speaker will be Jonathan Keen.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you, council president. My name is Jonathan Keen. I live at Thirty Lock Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I moved here in 2010 to start my sandwich because the city was beautiful. With access to the highways and a short drive to Providence, yet it still had that small town community feel to it. As a young couple to a new town, we couldn't wait to see what restaurants, shops, and other fun things we could find to do in Cranston. And when going to Garden City for the first time, I remember looking at my wife and saying, wow, this place is really falling apart. Since then, the entire place has turned around completely, along with the new development of Chapel View happening simultaneously.
Mr. Keen?
Yes, I'm getting to it. Thank you.
Stand on point.
Yes, sir. We were fortunate enough to find our home in the market where prices were still falling close to the bottom. Since moving here, the value of our house has increased. In fact, the housing between the bubble has increased four percent year over year. On top of what has already been noted, the city has created fourteen hundred new jobs...
Mr. Keen?
Yes, sir. I'm getting it. Yes, sir.
Please report, because we're talking...
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm getting to it, sir. Thank you.
Get into it.
Yes, sir. I have four minutes, sir. Thank you. Increase the bond rating and maintain a fiscally responsible budget. This is a team effort for sure, and not one to discredit any part or role throughout the city or its government. It is greatly achieved due to the direction and the vision of its lever, Mayor Allen Fung. It is convenient and often easy for people to sit on the sidelines and judge how someone's conducted themselves when faced with a moral, political, and personal matter. However, it is never easy for the person facing the issue themselves. Our job is not to judge one's character. As we leave that to the Lord, our job is to conduct ourselves in the best manner we can, respectfully, as we wish upon us. This is an instance where nobody can speak for what Mayor Fung had thought or felt when facing the corruption plaguing the Cranston Police Department. As we all know, living Rhode Island, this did not just start in 2009, it's not just consolidated Cranston. I am sure Mayor Fung did what he thought was needed and what was best for the city. Hindsight is always twenty-twenty. With the report being released and Mayor Fung explaining his side, let us look forward to a more transparent administration learning from this mishap. Thank you.
Joanne Spaziano.
My name is Joanne Spaziano, Twenty Boxwood Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. Council members, council president, Mr. Fung. Section fifteen oh four of the Code of Ethics, it is the policy of the city of Cranston that all municipal, elected, and appointed officials and employees and members of boards, commissions, and agencies must adhere to the highest standards of ethical conduct, respect the public trust and rights of all persons, be open, accountable, and responsive, avoid the appearance of impropriety, and not use their position for private gain or advantage. The Code of Ethics as set forth in Title Thirty-Six, Chapter Fourteen, of the General Laws of the State of Rhode Island, nineteen fifty-six, as amended, as referred to Article Three, Section Eight of the Constitution of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, be and hereby is adopted as the Code of Ethics of the city of Cranston. After reading the released report from the state police and the many illegal and questionable acts you have taken, do you see a contradiction in your actions as expected in Section fifteen oh four, Code of Ethics, as opposed to your actual documented actions that have not only cost taxpayers dollars, but have made Cranston a laughingstock in the eyes of this state and region? How do you defend your actions to the children of the Cranston school system?
Nicholas Lima.
Thank you, council president, members of the city council. My name is Nicholas Lima. I live at Five Eighty-three Lower Road Avenue. We've had a little bit of time now to digest the contents of the Rhode Island State Police's assessment of the Cranston Police Department that was asked for by our mayor, Alan Fung. And I think a number of things are clear after reading that assessment. It's clear, certainly, that Mayor Fung was the one who asked the Rhode Island State Police to review the department and report back to him and the city leaders what needs to change in our city's police enforcement. It was clear that the report was thoroughly conducted by the state police and delved into great detail, perhaps more detail than any other police assessment in the history of our state. It was clear, according to the report itself, that the mayor did nothing in violation of law. It's been very clear, in the last few years, the mayor has been the leader of our city. We've had three out of four years of no tax increases. This is, it's continued to grow and prosper. We've created new jobs here, and that this city, despite the reputation, Mr. Council President, that this report made people think about our city, that our city's reputation is not disparaged, our city's reputation is one of growth, one of job growth, one of prospering. We've had consistent balance budgets here, and this city has continued to improve despite that report, Mr. Council President.
Ask me to stand on point.
Yes, sir. It's also clear, Mr. Council President, this body cannot duplicate or approach, or even remotely approach, the effort conducted over eighteen months by the premier law enforcement agency in the state of Rhode Island, the Rhode Island State Police. And I would hope that this body does not pretend or portend that it can do so. It's also clear to me, after reading the report, Mr. Council President, that the mayor cannot be simultaneously criticized for interfering with the operations of the police department and simultaneously criticized as for not doing enough to interfere. I think that's an unfair characterization of what the mayor had to deal with, not only managing that police department, but the entire operations of the city. I think that by and large, the mayor's done an outstanding job, and if you read the report, Mr. Council President, you will see things that are certainly alarming, you will see things that alarm me. However, you will also see a mayor that was trying to do his job as best as he could, given the circumstances, and I think that since the report's been released, Mr. Council President, we've seen that the mayor has been willing to answer questions and move the city forward. And I would just hope, in conclusion, Mr. Council President...
Point of information, Council President. Point of information? Does Mr. Lima hold any titles, political titles, or do you serve like the state?
Mr. Council President, I don't have any elected office, no, but I am the chairman of the Cranston Republican City Committee, yes.
Point of information? So we got everyone identified with titles coming up, because I've seen other people elect that have spoken that I've not identified.
Thank you, council president. And just in conclusion, that's all I had. One point left. It was abundantly clear to me, Mr. Council President, that there may be those in these chambers who will be willing to use their elected positions for personal political gain as a result of this report, and I think it would be as equally shameful if that were allowed to occur. And a reminder that the council president and members of the city council, in going forward, they continue to do what's best for the cities of Cranston and do what's best for their own political futures. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Council President? Debbie Fleetman.
Mr. Council President? Just as another point of information, when the city council was meeting, I don't remember the exact date, we had just convened and we were getting ready to pass a resolution wanting the state police to come in and investigate. The mayor was downstairs, handing to the cameras, doing the same thing at the exact same time. So just, you know, as a point of information, a starting point. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Debbie Fleetman, and I'm here not only as a resident of Cranston, but I am here on behalf of the ACLU, of which I am a member, and I also sit on the board. In the last meeting, council members should have received two letters from the ACLU about the state police report. In line with those letters, I am here to urge you, the city council, to consider having an additional investigation of the Cranston Police Department practices. It's important to... It's important to emphasize what Cranston residents have learned about the police department through just this report and recent court decision. From the state police report, we have learned that high-ranking police officials have engaged in questionable surveillance of two department employees. We know that they engaged in questionable surveillance of at least one instance of civilian employees. We know that police officials improperly accessed the DMV database to obtain private information about the civilian employee. We learned that police officers apparently filed misleading, if not false affidavits, to obtain search warrants. And we also know that high-ranking officials manufactured evidence against Sergeant Josephson in the form of a non-existent internal policy. It's impossible to believe that these isolated incidences are isolated incidences. In fact, we know they are not because a Rhode Island Supreme Court decision from last year substantiates the reasons for our concerns, the ACLU's concern. In that case, the court found that Cranston police off, that Cranston police officers engaged in illegal searches and seizures to obtain evidence against a criminal defendant. The court also agreed that police officers had, officers had filed misleading or false affidavits to, to obtain search warrants in that case. The court's decision also raised questions about other practices of the department. We believe the residents of Cranston and the state deserve to know how extensive this pattern of police misconduct may have been, because it is clear that this is not just a matter of internal police politics. Among other things, an additional investigation could include conducting a random audit of the state database of access and payments for surveillance activities by the department. But whatever the next steps, it would be a mistake to assume that this report has uncovered all of the problematic activities of the police department. While we have no reason to question the new path that the current police has taken, that is not a reason for ignoring what may have taken place in the past years. I have a copy of my testimony, can I leave it so everybody can have a copy?
Yes, just, um, the papers are covered. Uh, next speaker is Council President. Councilman, right here?
Thank you, Council President. May I add one information with regard to the ACLU's presentation? Just a postscript to one of the items mentioned in this letter. The case that the attorney, I assume she's an attorney, spoke about was a superior court decision, which was overturned by the Supreme Court, although they left intact some parts of it. But just as a postscript, on April seventh, that case went to trial, and the defendant in that case was convicted of second-degree murder with a six-year-old boy. So I thought that you might want to know the end results of that case, which we'll discuss to hear about.
Evan Gillespie, Gillespie?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Emma Gill, sixteen Houston Avenue. Uh, point of information by title, the concerned president, uh, just to clarify that. So just to begin, uh, this will last about, I guess, in four minutes. First, thank you, Mayor Fung, for calling in to state police and having this investigation done. There's absolutely no doubt that the state police, that the Cranston police has been plagued with generations of problems. And without his strong leadership, we would never have been placed under Colonel, Colonel Winquist. And the department is now moving forward for the first time in a very, very long time. So in the report, you see extensive, uh, language questioning the mayor's character. And having known him for quite some time now, I can guarantee you the mayor's character is nothing but honorable and something that I aspire to be like one day. And if that's off topic, I don't know how it would be since the report directly calls into question his character. Uh, with that being said, knowing what we know of the mayor and seeing what he's done in the city of Cranston is absolutely amazing. Three years of no tax increase alone is amazing, and we have that, had that. Uh, but to move on, I would like to say, uh, I'm looking forward to years for the Cranston Police Department to come, see where they go, how the department will grow, and look forward to Mayor Fung's future and seeing how his strong leadership will grow and go into the department, as it has seen and ever held the department of the city without question. And that's it, thank you.
And that's the assignment sheet. Any of the council members who published the speech on the state police report? Please come forward, give your name and address and the record.
My name is Nathan Canin, I live at sixty-five Orchard Drive. I'd like to thank, are you the police chief? Thank you for staying on through this mess. I'm sure you're handling it, uh, nobody said thank you to you, that's what I'd like to say. And I'd like to tell the mayor, are you embarrassed? Are you embarrassed for all this? Because we're embarrassed we have to be here. So the idea of the game now is just step aside because you're a lame duck.
Richard Tomlin's four hundred Farmington Avenue. Some of what I heard here tonight is pretty hard. Not to act even angrily yet. I come before you sad and angry. I'm sad that this happened to a proud city, and I'm very angry it happened. It's almost, from what some say, it's like the young man next door, who was a boy scout, choir, altar boy, murdered his parents, and then threw himself in the mercy of the court because he was an orphan. That's part of what we're being faced with here tonight. Without even reading the report and following this, and I think probably as much or more than anybody in this room, many times, as Mr. Botts pointed out, I was the only citizen in here in times that we were going through this, and we should have had more information. Several of our council people have kept up the work to try to get this thing to where we are tonight. And I have to applaud the council and the, and the president for not being, taking the bait to go into a meeting and then having the report read to you for your eyes only. You couldn't say anything about it. That's just another one of those ploys. This is the most serious crisis that has hit this city in years. And I could say that because I'm a stupid follower, follower, most of you know I ran for office a couple of times. Didn't make it, but I learned an awful lot. I'm not a native of this city. I have no school chums in this city. Everybody that I know in this city are new friends that I developed over the years. And I've come to see several councils, and I've seen several of them, what they do. There's some that say we have to move forward. Forward to what? This is like Iceland or Iceland. If we don't crush it, it will drip, drip, drip. I sympathize and empathize with the chief and his top people that they want to move forward. But until and unless the people who are to be charged for this in a crime, nothing will be satisfied, and it will still keep boiling. If you look at it, there's two major things still we haven't heard about. During Ticket Gate, those who were called in by Anteduci, and they were using their private cell phones because they didn't want to go over the radio. I want to know where those cell phones are. Once they use them in the public domain, they are the property of the police department, this city in this state. Where are they? The other is the famous, uh, think of units that were put up for review or not put up for review in the recordings. Where are those recordings? That's the big elephant in the room. The big elephant in the room. That's where criminal activity may have taken place. You have the Triotta running things, the mayor, Anthony Chil, and Boland. And if you look at just one thing, if you want to look at what it's going to cost the city, and it will cost us more folks, get used to it. We haven't stopped yet. Anteduci was going to cost us a billion dollars, or five hundred thousand, excuse me. He's been out, I want to know how you can possibly justify keeping him on the payroll till April fifteenth. I read in the paper, they called about different days that he had coming. And then he's still going to accumulate other days. So it's already cost us over two hundred thousand, he's off the payroll. Then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in legal fees, and then we're going to give him forty thousand dollars? That itself is a crime. We have to do, every one of us, myself included, in this council, as a legislative body, to get to the bottom of this. We haven't gotten to the bottom of it yet. Do your job. The mayor should resign. Thank you.
My name is Carol Myron, I live at forty Bellevue Drive. I've known you a long time, Alan. We go back a long way. I spent the very heart of the afternoon reading the report, and I cannot tell you how disappointed I am in you and the actions of certain people on the police department. I'm disappointed for you, I'm disappointed for the citizens of Cranston. And I don't believe that you can continue to lead us effectively, and you should do the right thing.
Anyone else in the public that would speak, man? Please come forward and give your name and address and the record.
Hi, good evening, Joe Gabriel, sixteen two three Old Avenue in Cranston. I came here tonight and got pretty much exactly what I expected. A public brow beating masked as a necessary-for-the-people call to action, invoked by a few in this room, whose only real purpose for devising such a night ends up being for they themselves to proliferate the very thing they called the beating forum in the first place. An abusive power, forms of misconduct, et cetera. What a hypocrisy. What kind of show is this tonight? I'm half expecting Ted Wells, the so-called disinterested third party from the NFL, to come out from behind this bench with his full-of-holes, hundred-and-eighty-page Deflategate report in one hand, and your full-of-holes, one-hundred-and-eighty-page report, Ticket Gate report in the other. As you star witness, that's how much credence I and many others here put to all these allegations. The fact of the matter is, Mayor Fung is our leader, our quarterback, and has led Cranston to be in a great city again, despite, no disrespect intended, the persistent challenges and negativity from some of the envious Colts and Ravens-like leaders I see before me. Brady trounced the Colts in the second half of that game and was the MVP of the Super Bowl, cementing his reputation as the best quarterback ever. So too will the real facts come out one day and cement Alan Fung and his reputation as one of the state's fairest, most successful leaders in state history. This circus tonight will not and should not erase those accomplishments or stop that incredible progress. I implore members of this council to close the tent to this circus and get back to the issues we elected you to be remastered for. Instead, we have our own Superbowl, Super Bowl to win as a city, one city. Thank you.
Quarterback of the pony, Lee.
Anybody else in the public that would speak? Please come forward, give your name and address and the record.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Gargiero, twenty-nine Sorelia Road. And I do want to thank all of you for being here this evening. I had no intentions of getting off this evening to say anything except just to sit and listen and hoping for some type of resolution or even closure, honestly. Uh, I too spent three and a half hours reading that report, and it was honestly sickening. Uh, I too have known Alan Fung since we were kids, and as a person, Alan, I think you are a wonderful, huge-hearted person. I think you got caught up in the politics, and it saddens me. One of the words that I did not hear tonight, that I'm almost disappointed I didn't hear from anyone, is the misuse, not only the misuse of, of power with the police department and in the political standardary, but I do feel that we as citizens had all of our trust in you, and I just feel like we were misled. And I don't know how, you haven't pulled yourself out. I do hope maybe with the support of some citizens, we can all together, work together, and pull you, pull you out and hopefully get the city back on track. But I think one of the words that really hit me and hit my heart that I did not hear tonight was trust. I think we lost trust in you as a politician, and I just hope that we can gain some of that back. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak? Please step forward, give your name and address and the record. If anyone would like to speak. All right, nobody wants to speak? It's public, hearing section is now closed.